Alright then, I will call a Roslin Council meeting to order. It's Tuesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and it is four thirty-one. Uh, let's all stand for a flag salute, please.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Dan, can I get a roll call, please?
Uh, Councilmember Rissel?
Present.
Uh, Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Gruber?
Here.
Councilmember Adams? Oh, we lost you, Jeff.
I'm present. Hello?
Council, I got you. Councilmember Shear?
Here.
And Mayor House?
Yep. Uh, do we have any agenda updates? I've got one. Uh, we're gonna get a presentation from Forterra, uh, in a little bit here.
I'd like to also, um, request that we, uh, talk about the, uh, how the process for appointing a council vacancy. I know that some people have answered the city's, um, the city put out a call and then were told that we would talk about it at this council meeting. So, um, I think we should do that.
Talk about that. I can talk about that during Council Concerns, Kathy.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Uh, you know, we put the announcement out and it closes, uh, at the end of this month, and then, and then that's when council gets to, you know, work on questions and the interviews and stuff like that.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, council? Okay, the consent agenda for this evening are checks and EFTs as follows. May eleventh, accounts payable, check number one seven one four one to one seven one five three in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. April twenty twenty-one, ACH accounts payable in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And payroll for May fifth, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents. And the minutes from the last April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept, uh, the consent agenda in minutes from last, from last meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion here, council? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say nay, please, in your name. So the consent agenda passes. We'll move on to the administrative reports. Um, we'll start with the police department. Uh, Chief Land, are you on or representative?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much. Uh, sorry I missed last meeting. I really wish I had an excuse for that other than, uh, I think I'm getting older and just plain up for God. But I'm here today. Um, as far as updates go, we did replace Officer Burson who went to the Keddes County Sheriff's Office. We replaced him with a lateral police officer who was an officer for Maui, Hawaii, um, for eight and a half years. And he's gonna be a Roslin resident, so you guys will be able to see RJ Partridge quite a bit. Uh, by the house on South First Street. Last time I talked to you folks, we talked about the generator. Unfortunately, that thing is still not hooked up. But we did have a Cummins diesel mechanic come out and look at it and figure out what needs to happen so he can, uh, tune it up and get it ready to go just as soon as the electrician does his part. So at least that is in the works. Um, the Clealum Council did approve our budget for the body camera, car camera solution, that entire system. Uh, so now that I've got the final approval, that stuff's been ordered. We are having a little bit of difficulty because our cars are so old and we don't have any two cars alike. They're, they're all different makes and models. Um, to find the right accessories for the certain camera mounts and that type of thing, but, uh, they're working on that, so we're hoping to get that resolved and start with the, uh, assembly of those. Um, we talked about trying to get a workspace for the police department at, at Roslin City Hall, so we had the place to go. Uh, the computer towers that we had for that are all programmed. They're starting to be installed. One of those new ones is intended for the Roslin City Hall. Um, we're gonna be working with Sarah because the C G S network has to be completely secured. And the office space that we were initially going to put it in, uh, we may need to do some updating, put some things around to make it, um, C G S compliant, but we're working on that. And Sarah was excited to help us, so I'm sure we're gonna be able to figure it that out to be in compliance. And, uh, that's about all I got. I haven't talked to you folks for a while, so if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer.
Thanks, chief. Council, any questions?
Uh, not a que- sorry, real quick, but, uh, just coming into the busy season, chief. Um, I've kinda seen it more and more, just people parking irresponsibly, and I know we've kinda made it a point. I don't wanna be that council member, but we all kind of agreed as council members as a one that we wanted to enforce the, the parking situation a little bit more, of course, in front of the statue, the handicap. And I'm not saying that you guys aren't, I'm just asking just if you guys can look at it a little bit more coming into the busy season.
Yes, yeah. I'm sure you've seen us up there more frequently than, than before, but that's just due to the amount of traffic that Roslin's starting to experience. It's already starting to get that touristy summer crowd up there, so you'll see us up there more, for sure.
Cool.
Yeah, chief, the, the one area I'm sort of concerned about that I already see started was, if you ca- and I don't know if we could actually do anything about it, but it's at the handicap location where the striped buffer area is for handicap vehicles to open up their ramps and so forth. It seems to become a, a, a consistent Harley Davidson parking spot, um, through our town. And I'm just wondering, is there anything we can do to control that space for handicap?
Yes, there is. And, and Bubba came up to talk to me about that, uh, a couple weeks ago. And we discussed painting those as yellow and even, even put the words in there, no park. Um, I know that sounds like drawing pictures with crayons, but sometimes that has to be done to, to get the point across. Um, and, and like you said, it's an important issue, so if we could take those steps, um, I'd like to take them.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. It was just, you know, it's that one van that's gonna pull up that actually has the side ramp that needs to open up five or six feet. And we won't, and that person won't do it. And, and, and I, you know, I get there's not a ton of parking, but yeah, if we can just sort of work on that, I think painted pictures is actually a very good idea, just saying no park. I think that's a great idea.
Yes, and, and I know in some jurisdictions, to their credit, they have those end spots with the stripes, and those are designated motorcycle parking areas.
Right, right.
Even though the sign clearly says on there, no parking to corner, um, I, I, I guess I can understand maybe they're being, uh, not, not trying to be malicious by parking there is, is my point. So I think
Oh, no.
color them yellow, put the big old no park in words right on the, right on the ground. It doesn't hurt to try.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think, you know, it's like this intentional, hey, we're just gonna park here. I think that just becomes a, you know, out of the thought process. They wanna go in and get a, you know, drink and lunch, and so yeah, I just wanna know if we could try to do some preventative, and I think it sounds like you have a plan.
Yes, we're, uh, working with Bubba on that.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
You betcha. Hey, Jeff. Hey, Jeff, it's Bubba.
Hey, Bubba.
Hey, yeah, um, soon as my paint gets here next, hopefully next week, but the next couple of weeks, we will be getting that done, uh, before Memorial Day, so.
Right.
And then there's a couple other options I gotta talk with Kirk with about too, but we'll look in those down the road, but everything will be yellow, so it'll be good.
Nope, I appreciate you guys already discussing the issue, and as summer gets, uh, get, getting here, it already started about a couple, a couple of weeks ago, so that's great. I appreciate your tentativeness to it.
Awesome. Anything else for the chief, you guys?
Thanks, chief.
Move on to the fire department? Oh, go ahead.
No, just thanks, chief.
Oh, you bet. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, let's move on to the fire department, and is Chief O'Shottis on today? Or other representatives? Okay, we'll move on to the committees and commissions. Uh, we'll start, uh, I'll have, uh, Bubba start with the Public Works, uh, recap for, for us.
Hey, guys, uh, been another busy couple of weeks. Uh, we finished reading all the meters in town, which was, um, good for the crew, especially to just learn where those all are. Especially come winter time, it's always nice to know. Uh, next, we did our first round of mowing. We got all the parks in town. We got the memorial gardens and the cemetery. Um, we also turned on all the irrigation. And we'll set the timer so that they'll either water in the evening or early morning, so the people can use the parks all day. Um, we also will have the cemetery irrigation on. The, the rest been on this week. Part of it is on, um, already, but it will be ready for the cleanup, uh, Saturday. Um, you guys probably noticed, uh, I had M S I sweepers come to town and they swept for eight hours. We, uh, concentrated on downtown, obviously, because it needed it, and also because we need a paint in the next couple of weeks. Um, they're also able to sweep all of Brookside, which was nice, and the sweeper driver said that was really dirty. He dumped, I think, like, three loads off Brookside, but it's good. I mean, it's something we'll definitely keep up on. Uh, we were able to get Duck Town, South Second Street, basically the hill, because they had a lot of sand, all the way to Hoffenville. And I also had them sweep nine oh three from East South Ave, both sides, all the way to Nevada Avenue. Um, and that was pretty much eight hours, so. Still a little bit more we could do, and, um, like I said, we'll just work on that in the future. Uh, we located all the utilities for the cap improvement project, the, the stormwater upgrade. Um, we're gonna be potlouing for those utilities tomorrow with, uh, we have Advantage Dirt's, uh, Vactra come up, and the crew will be out there, um, get some experience out of Vactra. Uh, another thing from a couple of council, uh, meetings ago, I contacted WashDOT about those flashing, um, speed limit signs. And they were the state, so they ended up taking them down because they weren't solar. They had to change the batteries out every couple of days. So they end up just removing them, so they're gone now. Uh, next thing, we made a trip to the intake. The snow finally melted. We took William Larue from Violia. We checked out, uh, the locations, uh, of the valves, and we cleaned the fish screens. Um, there's really no major concerns at the moment, and it was good for the city crew in Viola to finally get up to the intake since the snow melted. We also took, uh, Willie down to the bridge to show them the bridge, the little control station on the Donry side of the river. So it ended up being, um, a pretty good positive trip. Um, then like I said, as far as, I just wanna give you guys a heads up, for the next couple of weeks, we probably will be blocking off paint. Either, probably gonna do half one day and half the other, so people can still get to businesses. Depending on how long it takes the paint to dry, we'll try to find a nice warm day, um, when that paint comes. But just a heads up to everybody so they know. And we'll probably put the little warning signs out we did again too, the night before. Um, other than that, everything, routine stuff's going well, so.
How was your response on the, uh, the parking, Bubba, when, with the street sweeper?
It was awesome.
Cool.
Uh, I, I, I talked to a few business owners. They were very happy about it. Especially the sweeping, but I mean, no one really, I mean, I noticed a lot of people reading the signs, that's why I was positive. We kinda painted them with that bright yellow so they kinda stand out, but I had a couple of people slip through and they just want their normal coffee, which was no big deal. We had one side of the street swept, so I just had them park there and, um, other than that, it's pretty, pretty positive, really.
Awesome. Good to hear.
Yep.
Good, good report too. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. No problem, guys.
Noel, Jeff, do you have anything else you wanted to add about public works?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I still would like to have a monthly meeting. I don't know why our monthly meeting got canceled or it's, uh, discretionary now, but I still would like to have a once a month meeting to talk about, or just hear the updates and also talk about some stuff that we've had on the list, so. I don't, I don't have anything for public works.
Yeah, plan on two weeks, then. We'll, we'll do one at three thirty.
Well, we, yeah, we can just do it. I, I guess what we kinda had planned, I thought in the beginning, was just the first city council meeting of the month at three thirty.
Do you wanna wait till, uh, June, then?
We can. I'll, I'll, I'll bring up, yeah, I'll bring up my other things and, uh, council concerns, but, uh, yeah, I, I believe so. I just like to hear the report, even if it's for an hour. Cool.
Yeah, no problem. First meeting in June, then, three thirty.
Okay, thank you. And then if we can just consistently have that on the schedule, that's when it's gonna happen, that'd be.
That'll probably work fine.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Adams, uh, anything from the cemetery group? I know your meeting's tomorrow, so. Or Thursday. Uh, we might have lost him. Uh, anything from planning a historic council member missile, Michelle?
Um, the planning commission met last week for a special meeting to go over, well, we discussed all of them, but, um, the four primary codes they've got are the accessory dwelling unit code, master plan development, that wildfire ordinance that you guys have seen, and then that lighting ordinance. So, um, they're working through those four. Um, and they're gonna be doing that at a separate meeting, so they can keep up on the architectural design reviews as well. Um, so that's with those, um, C A C, um, I wasn't at the last meeting here that they had, but, um, they did send some questions. So they did, um, look over that resilient forestry that was, report that was provided for them for information. Um, and they discussed a few other things. Um, they also, it sounds like they've been up there and kinda looked at the logging. So the logging is currently happening on the west side right now, and it's going to be moving over to the east side. Sounds like next week. Um, we should know hopefully this week what we've secured for funding, specifically from D N R, at least verbally. Um, for that project. Um, beyond that, unless there's somebody on here from C A C, I think.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
We can now.
Okay, yeah, I, I wanted to let everybody know about the cemetery. Um, uh, annual cemetery cleanup. For some reason, Mike, it wasn't, I guess you guys couldn't hear me, but if you haven't volunteered this year, if you wanna volunteer and do something this year, annual cemetery cleanup this weekend. We start between nine and nine thirty. We find spots for you to go work. Uh, we're hoping to get a hundred plus people spread out through the cemetery this weekend and start sort of weed eating and mowing and cleaning up the graves and, uh, picking up debris. So, um, that happens this Saturday. The Rosin Eagles will be providing a free lunch to those that, uh, volunteer. Um, so if you have time on Saturday and you'd like to help the community, come up to the cemetery between nine and noon and come.
That's great. Thanks, Jeff. And I'm sorry, was there anybody on the C A C on this call that would like to speak at the meeting?
If, if you are, just push after three or star three.
Okay, uh, I think they had the staff on any.
Can I, can I ask, can I ask Michelle some questions about, um, what's going on with the logging?
Can we do that during council concerns?
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so, next up then is, uh, unless staff has any other announcements.
I have, uh,
Next up, I believe we have, oh, go ahead.
I have one thing from the Roslin Lodging Tax Committee. At the last meeting, I was asked to follow up on a couple of things, and I figured I'd give the report at this point.
Okay.
The money that we have for that, that account, about forty-two thousand dollars, I found out what the uses could be and what they couldn't be, and, uh, the park restrooms would fall into a, 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 a good use for the money, an appropriate use. The parking lot issued down there for additional parking at the corner of Arizona and I think it's Second. Uh, that would fall into a, an appropriate use of the money. And then also, the, um, sidewalk compared blast panels in front of, uh, base camp would also fall into an appropriate use because it's a historic part of our downtown.
Oh, nice.
It is a birth draw, so we can use it for that as well, too. And then I will jump the gun and tell you that I have been seeking other funding for the sidewalk. I spoke to all three commissioners of the county, and they are looking into cog money, number one, if there's any emergency money left. They've also thrown out the idea that they, they have some other money they're gonna get with the reopen, uh, America funds. And depending upon what the rules are, they, they can get us money that way, and they may have some other money. And what I was talking about was another twenty thousand dollars from them. And then I also spoke to, uh, the R D A, Sherry Marusa, to deal with the Suncadia Fund for Community Enhancement. Um, they can only give money to a nonprofit. So Sherry's agreed to take the lead on that, and they seemed interested when she spoke to, I spoke to her yesterday. She spoke to them last night, got ahold of me this morning. She's gonna be sending me a grant application for that. And they were open to a, a twenty thousand dollar grant for us to do that as well, too. Just have to go through the R D A, the R D A will give it to the city. So there are some funds. Really wanna get that sidewalk thing finished up, as I think we all on the council and the mayor wants to get done. I'm just trying to find a way to fund it, so we don't have to come out of pocket too much here. So that kinda gets me up to date. So, thank you very much.
Okay, Tom, thanks.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, it sounds like the funding is right there. Uh, we do have one more staff report. Michelle has some information about that parking lot by the, uh, by the park.
Yeah, so the, the lot, uh, over there by the park. So, uh, we did get the deed back today. Uh, and it actually doesn't have any restrictions for the specific use. It just says that the city is to use it for parking, basically. Um, it's not real specific as to what type or what it's associated with. So as far as the zoning goes, the zoning allows for associated uses for parks and trails, which would be a parking lot. So I'm thinking that the only thing that needs to be done is we just need to combine that lot with those other parcels. Um, it is already in the city's name, so it would just be a lot combination, so it's specifically associated and designated parking for, um, the parks and trails, which would make it zoning compliant. Um, and obviously, I mean, you know, using it for overflow for downtown isn't gonna affect that, but, um, the primary designated use would be for the associated park and trails.
Great.
And then we'd have to make up, um, some rules about that too, that parking lot? Or do we have any other, um, pieces of land like that? Like, if it, let's just say we go with, uh, um, Leah Hadfield's, uh, paid for parking. Would, would we have to zone that differently then, if we did something like that, or, um?
No, it's, it, it would still be technically an associated facility, but as far as, you know, putting in the ordinance, it's just like any, any parking, anything in the parking ordinance itself. Um, you know, you've got specific designations for Pennsylvania Avenue, for example, so there, there might be something you wanna add into the code as far as that goes, if you want something that specific. Um, but it would still just be an associated facility specifically for the parks and trails, which would allow it by the zone, so it wouldn't be a zoning designation per se. It would just be specific to that parking lot, perhaps.
Yeah.
Okay.
But one, one other thing I'd add, like, one other thing I'd add really quick is this paid parking idea that Leah threw out, um, that is not an acceptable use of funds from a lodging tax money. Um, now that being said, with that new parking lot, I don't think it would be much of a deviation to ask for a donation for parking, have a donation there, but her talk about downtown Pennsylvania, that's not a, an approved use for lodging tax funds. I wanna make sure we're clear on.
No, I was just thinking of incorporating that idea to this parking lot. So, cause you, we get that huge influx of bikers that just come and take over the whole third street, and it'd be cool if we could have them all park there, and then if we could get it, I, I like the donation ask, really, so we're not nickel and diamond everybody, but if somebody has something to give, they, they can give it, so.
Yeah, I think the whole idea of using that parking lot, I mean, it could be used for any general public, but really the outdoor recreationalists that are heading up to Alaska, that's getting really heavily used the past two years, and so, um, which will help as events come by, it'd be great, you know, get with the bike club and sort of help them mo- market that.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that.
I think your internet is not great, Jeff.
Did we lose you again?
I was gonna say, we might have to give you a call, Jeff, in the networks.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with my provider.
Yeah, what is happening?
Do I have to pay more or something?
No, I'm, I'm sending a text now.
Yeah, be here tomorrow. I won't, but they can.
They can.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, so.
Do you have any more thoughts on this?
So what do we have to? Oh, sorry, Jeff.
No, I think we're on the same page on how that park get, how that parking gets used.
Well, well, how do we move forward, and what's our next step to designate that as a parking, clear it out, put some gravel in there, and actually designate that as a parking lot? I'm, maybe not go as far as garage, even if we took the front loader up there and just got some of the bushes and cleaned it out, um, trying to design it more into a parking lot. Do we, do we have to?
Yeah, no, we can, we can, um, coordinate with Public Works on that and see what we can do.
Okay, so we're ready, like, but we're ready to move, we're ready to, tomorrow to make it into a parking lot. We don't have to do anything with the, with, uh, zoning or coding or, or anything as of right now?
Other than combining it, but that's a pretty easy process. So it just needs to be attached, you know, to just like, you know, with all the other city lots, so they're basically all one parcel, even though they're not right next to each other. So we, we probably legitimately should combine that so that it is actually associated with the park. So that, I'll find out how to do that, but that's not a, that's not a complicated process.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, I believe we have a present.
Just a second. Just as a point of order, is there anybody that objects to this parking lot?
I do. Hearing none, I think we leave it, leave it to staff to move forward with it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Second if needed.
Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, I believe a presentation from Forterra.
I've got Rebecca, but I don't know.
Rebecca? Or?
Hi all, yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Nice to see you all. Thank you for having us, council and mayor. Um, I wanted to give you a bit of an update on the, uh, Forterra development at the number four mine site. Um, we have been continuing to meet with our planning advisory team that we mentioned in the last update. We're meeting with them monthly. We have a meeting tomorrow night. They've been invaluable in helping us to set this community work on the right foundation and help plan our engagement moving forward. So I wanna call out again their incredible generosity of time in sharing that with us. We're also continuing to work on gathering information about the land. We're still finalizing our critical areas report, especially focusing on the wetlands on the property. It's really important that we get that information finalized and get a better idea of what needs to be done, because they actually are quite extensive, as we shared during the community meeting. And it will impact the part of the property that can be developed. Um, so we're continuing to work on that, as well as doing some soil testing in a, you know, in a way that supports our um, determination of what will be necessary to build on, in the buildable area on the land. So you might see some people out there, and that's what you're seeing. Um, I think all of you know that we had our first community meeting on March thirty-first via Zoom, and it was incredibly successful. We had more than sixty people attend, which is pretty amazing, I've gotta say. I've been in larger communities where I've gotten half that, so that was pretty incredible, that, that level of participation and passion for the community. It was really great to see. I think it was a really great foundation for our conversation. There will obviously be many more meetings. Um, but we were able to hear from everyone there, what their primary concerns with the property as it develops, what their concerns were, what they'd like to see. Um, we're gathering that information, and we're pairing that with the design team that we've hired to help us with the conceptual visioning for what the development could be, and that will continue this conversation forward. So we introduced Lawrence Kamara and Ross Chapin, the two city planners and architects that we hired to help with that process. And right now, we're working with them to kind of come up with some options we can present to the community for the entrance to the development, what that might be, um, at the next community meeting. We're gonna plan on that next community meeting happening on July twenty-first. Before that meeting, there will be a postcard that goes out to all Roslin residents. As well, anyone can register for this meeting. We'll put, be putting that link out publicly. I'll be able to share that with you soon, so that you can send it out to your contacts, so we can make sure it gets out to everyone. But before that meeting, we also want to distribute a survey to try to reach out to people who weren't at the meeting or felt like at the meeting they didn't get to share all of what they'd like us to know as we proceed forward. Like I said, there were many more meetings, but we wanna have also opportunities outside the meeting to get as much info from people as possible. So just know that this will continue to be a very collaborative process with the community, with you, the council, and leadership, you know, as we proceed, what we really with you, the council, and leadership, you know, as we proceed, what we really wanna do is make sure that the community is driving the design. So we're just at the beginning of that, but I'm really excited. It's, like I said, it's pretty amazing to see the level of engagement in the community already. And I think that's just gonna make this a really great process for everyone. Anyone have any questions for us? Alright, well, we'll plan to provide another update to y'all. I think probably after the July meeting, so we can give you some information about what we hear there. Um, but as always, feel free to contact me with any questions or concerns. I'm always available to answer that or collaborate with the city on any, on any issues that relate to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great, Rebecca, thank you. Okay, we'll move forward with, uh, citizen comments for this evening. Uh, first on my list here is, uh, Janine Brodin.
Thank you. I am unmuted myself. Thank you for this time. And my comments are shared with Ellie Baloo, who actually wrote this, so please. The city of Roslin has once again chosen the low road as it logs the Roslin urban forest. It abandoned its long-term forest practices application. Integrated fifteen-year plan that incorporated conditions to minimize logging impacts and mitigate address hydrological, ecological issues. This was replaced with a three-year permit that allows extreme commercial thinning throughout the forest with minimal conditioning or mitigation. The DNR gave Roslin an opportunity to receive immediate funding to upgrade current logging to a quote balanced ecological restoration. But Roslin will not identify work that can be done before DNR's June funding deadline. Instead, it continues to log the most commercial part of the Roslin forest, leaving until later the permitted logging that addresses severe beetle chill. This later is within a beetle's prime flight record, uh, period, excuse me, although professional recommendations have been to avoid such timing. Almost a year ago, Ellie wrote a letter to this, uh, to the editor calling out the Roslin City Council for not consulting with the Citizens Advisory Committee as logging plans move forward. Such consultation is mandated by the Land Steward, sorry, St., uh, Land Steward's plan, probably over my tongue. Since then, there have been two more resignations from the CAC, both in response to the council and mayor's refusal to provide timely information to the CAC, thwarting its ability to make specific recommendations. Listen, a month ago, Roslin copayed with Observation Northwest Report by Resilient Forest Way that provides potential alternatives to address developing bark beetle outbreak as well as expected future nat- natural disturbances. Now the city ignores specifics in the report, instead it is directing its forester to log daily using an unwritten forestry prescription that we were told is somewhat better than what is allowed. Where is this prescription? With the resignation of councilperson Hadfield, there is no council oversight or communication with AFM. Our forest is more than trees. Unless Roslin immediately changes its logging forestry, the forest community of the Roslin urban forest will be lost. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Janine. Uh, next up, I've got Karen Bognozzo. Apologize if I mispronounce it.
I don't, I don't see Karen on here, so if she's on, if you're on here Karen, just hit, um, star three to raise your hand so I can unmute you. Or asterisk three.
Okay, we can come back and try to get you at the end. Uh, Karen, uh, next up beyond that is, uh, Keegan Finkler.
Just give her just a second. Yes, sir.
There we go. Thank you. Um,
Yep.
So, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
So, uh, good afternoon, council. Um, I'm here today to just share some observations I've made while attending council meetings over the last few months. I've heard from people from every position. Council, um, committee members, past committee members, residents, and sadly, our, even our, um, resigning committee and council members and their frustrations um, from their perspective. Essentially, what I've been listening to is that everyone has a similar feeling. They felt unheard or unappreciated for their work and effort, kind of across the board. Um, there have been lots of conserva- con- cons, uh, um, lots of, um, all of a sudden I got, I, I was, okay, lots of conserv- lots of talk of, about the forest and public works. Um, in these, it's highlighted to me the greater need for better communication and understanding. Some of the council expressed that people aren't recognizing things that are being completed or, um, it within the city or currently being worked towards. At the same time that many volunteers, um, on our committees are saying that they feel ignored or left out of important decisions that they were asked originally to be part of. Outside of meetings, I've heard many people, um, talk about that they're not even sure how to engage in city life or city activities. This is a hard place for everyone to be. No one wants to be here. It's exhausting and it takes more of our time and energy that we could be putting into our community. I believe a lot of the tension and frustration comes from a lack of communication and easily available information on what's happening in our town and in our community. Citizens like me really want to be part of and supportive of what makes this town great. Um, as a, as our town grows, we need to be sharing with our new residents, reminding also some of us who've been here for a while of our history, our stories of why Roslin is unique and special. Um, at this time, it feels like information and history is only shared if people work really hard to find it. Um, or find those people who can, who will talk with them about it. Um, city information might be posted on the website, might be posted on Facebook. It's sometimes hard to tell where it'll be. Many times the postings come with caller email the city for more details. Our city staff is limited and they wear many hats. Um, fielding calls and emails for things that could be posted with complete detailed information in common places just adds to our city staff's workload. I strongly encourage the mayor, the city staff, and the council to come together to find new ways of sharing what's happening with our city government. On the most basic level, our website needs to be more user-friendly and include the most current documents without having to call the city to locate them or request them. Right now, there's a lot of wasted energy.
Karen, your time's up, fun.
Okay. Well, I'll email that also to you so you can see, but I'm really just hoping that it'll be easier to find documents, easier for us to get information. Um, and I know that you guys have that control and you guys are our leaders, so I'm hoping you'll change the tone and help us all make Roslin awesome, like it, like we all love, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Keegan. Uh, next up, we've got Glenn Rudolph.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I started my video, yes. Okay, uh, the other day I got an interesting email from a friend who pays close attention to what the state legislature's doing and, uh, this last session, some money is going to be available from the Department of Commerce Public Works Board. And it has money, money to loan for construction and pre-construction projects. The systems are, um, eligible systems are domestic water projects. We have one of those, streets and roads, stormwater and sewer. And the interest on these loans are less than one percent. So the application period is May tenth through July ninth. I've got the information. I will ma- email it to you, uh, Mr. Mayor, and, um, it can't beat this, we've got some projects. And I'm, I'm curious what, how our shovel-ready status is with our, with our water pipe going up to Domery Creek. Is anything been figured out at this point? Um, I, I'm curious what's going on. Anyway, this, this is another golden opportunity to get some, some cheap money. So anyway, that's all I got to say today. Thanks for your time and good seeing you all and stay healthy, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Okay.
Uh, Karen Bognozzo, were you able to come on?
Star three or asterisk three if you're on the phone.
Okay, then we'll move on to, we've got, uh, the Transportation Improvement Plan, the six-year plan that's been put together. Uh, we start with the public hearing. So I will open the public hearing now. I believe we have at least one person that wants to speak to this. Tom Yurin, are you in?
I, I think so. Uh, technology works, I guess. Uh, my name is Tom Yurin, uh, one oh three North East Street, Roslin. And, uh, I just have a, a couple of brief comments on the TIP. Thanks for, uh, for letting me make these comments. Uh, particularly, I wanna address, uh, projects four and five on the TIP program, and that's the road extension to the, uh, Towns of Tiana Way parking lot and the road connection between, um, Dakota and uh, California down there by the wrecking yard. Um, those two projects, I understand, have been on the TIP for, uh, a number of years. But there's been some changes recently, as everybody knows and has talked about, with a couple of private initiatives, uh, slash developmental projects that are in the works uh, by a couple of, uh, private nonprofit entities. That would be Towns of Tiana Way and, and Forterra. And those, the, the changes that have happened is, is made those two projects pretty integral with the development and initiative plans for those two entities. Such that, you know, without a whole lot of exaggeration, one can happen without the other. And, uh, those are, I don't wanna say anything about those entities, those nonprofits are, are good. I'm sure they're gonna be great partners. But, um, they're going to need those TIP projects built. They're gonna have uh, impacts. They're gonna have a lot of input in how those TIP projects are, are configured. Uh, and I read the, when I was reading through the funding plans for those two projects, I noted that they were all public funds. Uh, and I, I re- I realized that TIPs are conceptual and they're more policy and priority directives uh, for the council to, to put out there. But I just wanted to be sure that, uh, the statements in there didn't foreclose any options to negotiate with the two entities for participation in those projects as mitigation for impacts uh, or as making it work with their, with their development. And, uh, you know, I understand that that's probably not the case, but I wanna, I wanted to point that out because uh, those two TIP projects will have significant benefits for those entities. And, you know, we're, that's great, but we're Roslin citizens and we're gonna end up paying for a lot of it. So there's a, uh, an issue of fairness and, and, uh, assigning the costs correctly too. So that's, that's all I had to say.
Alright, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Who would like, uh, part of the public hearing for the six-year transportation improvement plan?
If you're on the phone, star three or asterisk three to raise your hand.
Okay, nobody else needs to speak from the public. I will close the public hearing. And then we'll move on to the six-year transportation improvement plan, uh, resolution as a new business for council. We start with a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the, uh, TIB as presented.
Second. Discussion, council?
Uh, thank you, Tom, uh, Tom, for bringing up those points. I do think, uh, we definitely should talk with, uh, Forterra and, um, discuss if there's any possibility with, if we have to, with bringing out utilities and that road and so forth and making sure that we have um, a good connection with, with, uh, impacts like, uh, Tom was saying. So I, I appreciate those um, concerns. Thank you, Baba, for giving us a new or a, a up-to-date TIP plan. Um, but yeah, that Dakota one, it's definitely our secondary and we wanna get that done, but we should definitely have, uh, some kind of partnership or, uh, agreement with Forterra before we, we do all the work for that, so.
Hey Nolan, this is Michelle. So, so yeah, so this is the first step in, in making that so that we can kind of negotiate and create that as part of a developer's agreement.
Okay.
Um, so it, it needs to be on this list in order to be able to make it a precedent, I guess, for the city and those negotiations. So this is the first step in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the procedure. Um, so this TIP will then be placed, I believe, on the, on the Quadco, um, the lists that they, that they maintain? Is that correct?
Uh, n- no, I, I guess what are you?
Well, I'm just curious because I, I know that, that, that list that, that Quadco maintains and, and Roslin isn't, I looked on their, on their listing and Roslin does not have any projects listed there, although every other town around here does. And then from there, what happens is, um, those, those projects can be placed on the state TIP list.
So the Quad, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, the Quadco, so we just kind of got in that group, uh, myself, Michelle, and, uh, our engineer. We did that three months ago, or kind of our first, well, my first meeting. I know, uh, our engineer's been in it. So we have another one coming up, uh, on the fourteenth, I think, this, uh, coming up. And so we're trying to get a lit, we're trying to get a project on, on their list. So Quadco's kinda, uh, it's kinda like a cog thing where we're asking for money for a huge pool with quad counties, all the counties. Uh, the TIP part is just what we as a city see as a plan for the next six years. Kinda different. Then we could ask the cog and, and Quadco and, and whomever else for more money, but for the TIP projects, but, that are presented. But yeah, this is, we could, so we could, we could ask Quadco, but yeah, I think these are.
That's, that's good to hear. Yeah, thank you.
But the Quadco, I asked for the, the Safe Travels Trail. That was kind of our, our main for here to the school. That was kind of a an objective we were looking at.
So if we get, if we get our projects on Quadco, then they can move to the state TIP? And the reason this is important is because that's where, um, the feds look for the, when they're, when they're, um, dispensing earmarks. And when the, this last batch of earmarks, like a month ago, um, uh, uh, Playelm had, had projects on the state TIP list. They got three hundred thousand dollars. Um, Ellensburg got over a million dollars to do exactly what you're talking about, Nolan, to, um, extend, uh, a pedestrian walkway. So if we, I, I'm, I'm really happy to see this first step is being taken and I would hope that we would continue and, and get our projects also onto the state TIP.
Yeah, I'll, we'll, we'll bring that up on, uh, I don't, I don't know if it's this, this plan that we, we bring up at the Quadco or, or how we go about, uh, with that, but I guess Michelle will help along the way, or then, or, uh, Theo.
Yeah, Nolan, so we're required to do this. This is state requirement for us to update this, this plan. And then you, Quadco, as far as Quadco, that's a funding entity. So we would be applying for funding for one of these projects. They have to be on this list in order to apply for the funding from Quadco. So is that, does that make sense? Does that answer your question, Kathy?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just saying that's great. I'm glad you're, I'm glad this is going ahead, but I, I think there's a further step that can be taken, which is from Quadco, you get on the state TIP and then you're, then you're, you know, you have a bigger pool of money to draw from, at least from what I read. I could be wrong.
No, you're right.
So thanks, that's all.
Other, uh, questions, council? I mean, as it was mentioned, is like step one to, to more steps in the future. So all those in favor of passing the six-year transportation improvement plan, say aye.
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 Anyone against it, say nay and your name, please. Okay, so the six-year transportation improvement plan is passed and we will move forward with the council concerns. Um, Kathy, do you wanna vote first? That she already started, uh, on the, with the forest. Is that what you were gonna ask?
Oh yeah, I, I'm just curious about where we're at with the, um, uh, um, applying to DNR for, um, for, um, money. I know that we're in, we're in week three of logging with no written. for, um, money. I know that we're in, we're in week three of logging with no written logging prescription and no oversight to protect the city's interest. Um, I'm wondering if, um, if any concrete application has been made to DNR at this point? And if so, I'd like to know what they were, what was requested of them.
So first of all, there is a prescription, Kathy. Um, second of all, what was the other one?
Oversight.
There has been, there's been oversight nearly twice a week and not including the people that have gone up like Kim Larned and Leah Hadfield. But, uh, AFM has been up there at least twice a week and, uh, one week they were up there more. And then as far as the conversations with DNR, uh, you know, Michelle and Eric at AFM have been on the phone with DNR probably practically daily to work this out. We've got the timelines worked out. Um, everything, there is no application at this point. It's all, uh, verbal. Um, but we're moving forward on the verbal. Uh, I have, per DNR's request, we've stopped, or we are stopping and mobilizing the contractor to move to the Beetle Kill side. Um, so that we can finish within the timeline on the Beetle Kill side that the DNR requires for the additional funding. Um, we've gotten, you know, written agreements, or not agreements, but written discussion of the amounts that are going to be available to us as well as future availability of, of forest restoration projects. Um, so I mean, the amount of funding that will come to us is going to be generous and, and fully utilized. Um, does that help answer the concerns?
Well, I, I, I actually, um, I was thinking more of, I mean, A- AFM, I mean, I was out on that, that DNR tour and talked to those guys and they were, I liked them. Um, and they answered my questions. They were very informative, but they are actually, um, working on commission. And so what I am, that means however, you know, the more trees that are taken out, the more money they make. What I'm concerned about is whether we can, we, we could, um, hire someone from Resilient Forestry or a similar group to, um, work in our interest. Um, and that, that's my point. Uh, and then I also, I mean, I have not seen a, where would I find this written prescription? The logging prescription.
The Resilient Forestry Plan actually details the prescription that AFM put together.
The, the resilient for, the resilient forestry plan on page eighteen actually says, um, that they, um, that the city's intended logging plan could meet the goals of the land stewardship plan if a written prescription was provided, which showed how the logging would meet the goals of the LSP. Um, what's included in their report is not a prescription.
Well, and Resilient Forestry also talked about they didn't, did not have time to complete the, what their synopsis was to the end. Um, I'll, I'll determine where the prescription is and, and we'll point it out.
Thank you.
And like I said, they are moving to the Beetle side next week, so DNR is pleased and I'm pleased. Are there council concerns?
I have quite a list. Uh, we didn't have our public works meeting, so I figure we still talk about them now. Um, bark in the park, uh, where are we at with that? We uh, heard that we were getting grants hopefully from AWC for bark for the play structure.
Hey Nolan, uh, y- yeah, I got prices on everything, um, from Swanson's Bark down in, it's in southwest Washington. They're just, they're real busy, right? Like this time of year with trucking to get it over. But they could pretty much haul all we need in one truckload, but they said, once they kind of slow down, probably like maybe hopefully end of this month, if not June. Um, then we could get a truck from them and they have a couple of different ways of doing it. They could truck it, um, dump it there for us and we use our, you know, hand shovels and backhoe to do it, or they also have a blower truck that they can load it in and then they can like kind of blow it underneath so, um, the equipment so it gets to the right depth. Um, but basically we're just, I mean, other than that, they're, I think trucking would be too expensive if I hired somebody else out right now.
Yeah. Um-
But yeah, I got, go ahead.
I was just saying, yeah, however we can get it done, if I have to help too with spreading and, spreading bark, uh, yeah, let me know, Baba, because I'd love to get this project done. I-
Yeah, no, definitely, because I, I want to kind of readjust those parking, those railroad ties for parking. I got that on the list before we do this. But I think, I mean, it's basically the trucking. I mean, yeah, volunteer's fine. I don't care. I don't, I mean, I'm fine if the crew has to do handwork. It, it's not a big deal. It's just more of the trucking cost and that they're not even delivering to the east side of the state yet.
Okay. Well, um, if you can get a price for that bark, uh, and then make-
I got everything at the shop, in the shop already.
Okay, maybe I'll come talk to you about that, because maybe we can yeah, because I have some of that stipend money that's still sitting in the, like, in the, in the budget and I don't know if we can use some of that for, to, for this project, just to pay the little bit extra to get them over here. Um-
Did, yep, after that, we have, okay. Yeah, because the grant we had, what was it, like ten thousand dollars or we have for it?
That's a lot. That's cool. I didn't know we got that much. Wow, that would have been nice.
I don't know what that amount is, but I-
Oh, I thought, I saw it when I saw it on the stair. Anyway, whatever it was, I, I, I I think it was like over a hundred yards. So we got, uh, like a ten dollar yard discount because it was like thirty-two dollars yard. I got it down to twenty-two dollars a yard. Um, they could deliver that much in one truck and then we, it would pay for the trucking with the numbers. Like I said, I got it all hanging on the, uh, the chalkboard.
Okay.
Um, in the shop, so, yeah, we can, we can, we can meet up if you want to take a look at this.
Okay. Uh, next up is, uh, park bathroom locks, the automated, automated locks for the bathroom. Talking about, now we're into summertime, criminal, or time to have kids have fun and do dumb things. Or adults.
Um, those, I don't know, I mean, probably not this year because they're almost like eight hundred dollars or more a door. Since we have three doors. I mean, we'd kind of have to look at where we could pull that money from.
Okay.
But I mean, it's one thing we could maybe figure out something for next year. I mean, it's still nice that the, the police officers are locking it at night. I mean, that's, that's a kind of a big thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to avoid is them un- unlocking it or locking us, unlocking it, even though it's, it has eyes on it, it just, yeah. But-
Yeah, a hundred percent. Those, like in Clum, we had them there. They're, they're slick, the automatic ones. You just set them on time. We change them different times of the year, like when it got dark and the weather and we closed them earlier. I mean, they're, that's a, a great idea. I like it, but it's I think kind of a budget thing.
Yeah.
Put it on the budget retreat list there, Nolan.
Yeah, I'll lea- yeah, I'll leave it on, on my list that I got. Uh, painting the crosswalks. Are we, is that what you were talking about? Were you doing parking stripes and-
Yeah, so-
Crosswalks?
Yeah, we have the new striper. I'm waiting on the painting. So what we'll do, like if I block off half a ten, we're going to paint the center yellow line to eighteen inches. Um, I got a new sign that we got to put in where the old one was, uh, by the fire station. We'll paint the parking stalls. We'll paint the crosswalks on second and ten. We'll paint the crosswalks on our avenue side of nine oh three, but the state highway department, they paint every, they should actually paint all four. I'm going to talk to Kevin Nicholson to see when they're going to come through town and paint, but that's usually separate. The paint trucks separate than the crosswalks, but they're not in bad shape. I looked at them the other day, so we can actually, we'll probably just touch them up because, um, I just got to build a stencil for the crosswalks. But as far as parking stalls, center line, I got paint, I got glass beads coming. Like I said, they should be here next week, if not the next, but we will, as long as it gets here, we'll get it done before Memorial Day.
Awesome. Good goal.
And then we're going to clean up, yeah, and then throughout summer, there's some spots like by the post office and, uh, you know, other places where there's some yellow curvy that we can touch up. But we'll get all that done too.
Cool. Uh, there's als- also a stop, the stop sign, that's, uh, the two-foot tall stop sign on Second Street next to the post office. Can we change that or is that a reason that it's that small?
Oh, you mean the parking, the parking sign?
Yeah, sorry, the no parking sign. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I, I, well, yeah, we did fix like on, it was Third and Nevada, we fixed that short stop sign. Yeah, I talked to, um, John, the postmaster there the other day about that and he was fine with. I mean, I asked him how long it's been like that. I was kind of confused, but we, I, I have that on the list. We'll just, um, I think it looked like a two-inch galvanized, uh, pipe. So what we'll probably do is just get one of the right height and we could thread it back in. It would be the simplest fix for now.
Cool.
Instead of cutting concrete or something, but yeah, nope, it's on there.
And you can take the, that old one way that's been laying there for a little while?
Yeah, I saw it because I, I waited. I don't know what happened, but yeah, we'll grab it and get, make it right.
Thank you. And thank you for putting that stop sign on, uh, C Street in that funky alley that nobody ever stops at. Thank you so much for doing that.
Oh, yeah. No problem.
Um, everybody, just a reminder, next week's candidate filing. Um, so make sure you got that all in. Uh, Charlie Martin, he is a, uh, bu- future Eagle Scout that is trying to uh, redo one of our parks as a Eagle Scout. Um, to become an Eagle Scout recipient, he, he needs to do some community service and this is what he's planned is to try and spruce up Fireman's Park. And he has some ideas of adding some, uh, fencing around the park with two entrances, uh, desen- designated parking in the, uh, in the alley with gravel. He wanted to add a kiosk with trail information to create the center point. Um, he wanted to stain and repaint the sign to make it pop and more attract, more attractive. Um, I did send his email with kind of his, his, uh, his proposal of a fence design. Um, it's, it's a sketch, so bear with him. He is a senior in high school. Uh, and then an Eagle, then he also has a top-down view of it as well. Um, so I'd like to have this on the agenda. We can talk about it next week or, um, if we could do it this council meeting, that's fine, or if we can send this stuff out so everybody can be aware and we're more transparent. Um-
Yeah, we, yeah, we could definitely talk about that and then, um, if, I mean, and even if I could give the kids contact info if he wanted, okay, Michelle has it because even if you want to come to shop, there's probably already some of that stuff he can, you know, start working on and then obviously we have to go about, you know, for the fence and the other stuff, but-
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I was just looking at it today. I mean, yeah, it definitely needs gravel. There's, I'd kind of like to even find where the actual edge of the lawn is where our park is, so we know how far to mow or, you know, what, what is ours, just if we had to add sprinklers or whatever too. But no, that's, I like that idea. That's great.
Cool. Um, so yeah, if you can contact him and I'll, I'll te- I'll let Charlie know that too. And if you need anything, feel free to get in touch with me and I can help out with, with that project too, Baba. Um, even some gravel possibly too, but I'll keep in, in contact with Char-
Oh, awesome. No, I like that.
Um, uh, question to, about the cemetery cleanup and sorry my list is long. I've been writing them. Uh, do you br- do we bring our own tools and where are we dumping all the brush at with the cemetery cleanup? You know, I mean, I-
Are you on?
Can you, maybe he's muted.
Well, Nolan, what I know is I believe that the, the different volunteers are going to bring, uh, hauls and trailers. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I've been trying to get re-hosted for a half hour now. Um, yes, just bring your hand tools, rakes, weed eaters, things, that's about it. Uh, rakes, weed eaters, few shovels, um, m- most of it'll be handwork and cleaning up. Um, and I apologize to everybody that's on here. Um, obviously I've lost my internet connection and I, I didn't hear the last thirty minutes of this council meeting. So those comments made, I apologize for not hearing out. Um, so maybe I can get an update after council. Um, so I can get caught up on the comments and concerns of individuals, please.
I'll send you the link tomorrow, Jeff.
That'd be great.
Where are we dumping, uh, the brush at?
Uh, at the, at the waste station.
Uh, we're not allowed to dump it at our, uh, our dump site?
Well, we could, but I believe that, uh, the, the, the group, the, what are they? I apologize, Jeff, for not remembering the name of the-
I got it. I'm on now. For some reason I keep getting muted. Um, what we will do is we will take, every year we take it to the city dump and typically the city reimburses us for that funding. Um, because it is city property that we are cleaning up. Um, this year I believe the RDA has put up, um, I want to say, um, between a thousand and fifteen hundred dollars. They'd like to help pay for our services to not impact the city with extra, extra cost. Um, so the idea is we take most of it, as much as we can to the city dump into the landscape area. County dump, I'm sorry. County dump in the landscape area and then any residual, which is usually just a small pickup, might go to the Roslin City Dump. But we really tried not to, we would fill that city dump up if we continued doing this every year with the abundance of piles we get, so, um, we really try to get rid of it at the county dump, especially the pine needles.
Okay. Um, and my last thing on my list, because I don't need, won't go over the others, uh, I believe Clealum uh, is going through a, a rough process and I think we should weigh in our, our two cents and that's with the forty-seven degrees north. Um, I think this would affect Roslin if they decide to go the route that they're currently getting proposed with having a one tax parcel lot. Um, and having a, the, pretty much a, a trailer, uh, mobile, mobile park home that's doubling the size of, of our little town. So, um, I think that we should have some kind of say. I'm, I'm not saying that we need to be pounding on the doors, but I think Roslin as a whole should be voicing our concerns. Um, especially what Joe Beck has brought up with the wastewater treatment facility, um, and then just our county as a whole, how it's blown up. Uh, I know we set our two cents with other things. It might seem like, uh, just because it's not in Roslin doesn't really affect us too much, but as we're can, we're seeing on, on the gauntlet right now with more traffic on there ever before, that, uh, it's just going to be a congested mess. So, uh, we should be looking at, um, hoping Clealum has, uh, where residents come, if it's low-income housing or however it is, but you own your house, you own your lot and you take pride in what you own. And so, um, yeah, I just think we, we should be a part of this conversation as well, not, not being a, a sore thorn, but a, just a voice of, of concern, if, if there is concern. Maybe they have a great plan, but I haven't really seen that great of a plan as of right now, so.
Good idea, Nolan.
Thank you.
Other council concerns?
I have one more thing. Um, uh, I grew up around logging. My father was a graduate of the University of Washington School of Forestry and he worked for commercial timber companies. Uh, my brother was a logger. All my uncles were loggers. Uh, I've seen a lot of logging operations and I know what they look like. We're at a critical junction in the life of the Roslin Forest and I'd like to help in any way I can. I was on CAC from two thousand eleven through two thousand fifteen and I have that experience. And so I would like to ask the mayor to appoint me as the council liaison to the CAC. Thank you.
Uh, you know, I can, I think, I have no problem with that, Kathy, and I'll do that right now. You, I have appointed you. Or if you, if that's what you want to do, I absolutely support that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for stepping in, Kathy.
I have two very quick comments. One, the bathroom locks, going back to lodging tax money, would qualify as a use. We spent a lot of money on those bathrooms and, and there's lots of things we're talking about spending the money on right now. But, and I really would like to see the other bathrooms get upgraded, but that is a, that would be an appropriate use of funds there as well too. And then we've kept putting this off and I think we've talked about it the whole time I've been on council. And maybe this is the year we need to do it, because that's a lot of money in that back. And use the other money for the other bathroom on the parking lot and whatever we need for the, for the sidewalk. But I just want to throw that out there so you know that. And then finally, the other comment would be, uh, the Upper County Recovery or the Upper County Rec Center Executive Committee, which is a mouthful. We will meet again, uh, next Wednesday, Tuesday, next Tuesday. And I'll have a, a fairly large report after we get through this next meeting at the next council meeting. That's all I got. Other than public works, thank you for the work you did. It was amazing on the streets.
Um, I'll speak, I'm going to speak to the bathroom locks. So I've done the research on the bathroom locks that City of Clum uses to what we have. Ours aren't applicable to the same system. We would have to change our door system. Uh, we have a, well, we have a standard, uh, ball and all, all those electronic door systems come with mortise lock systems. Um, which is a completely different style door that our bathrooms use and a different, and a better locking system. Um, so, um, Um, so, um, we would need to upgrade our door and, uh, the doors and jams at the same time to put those types of locks in. I've researched the locks, um, and that's, that's our option at this point. Our, our, our doors will not accept the same locks that City Clown uses for the, um, auto build. They use them to unlock them man, you know, unmanually, you know, from remote. So, um.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're, you're a hundred percent right Jeff. We have to, it's a whole door and frame.
It's a whole door and frame and door system that needs to be changed. And I, I brought this up about two months ago, um, when we were talking about these locks and obviously that got put aside because you're probably talking with the locks alone, fifteen hundred to two thousand a door being installed. Probably more about two thousand dollars a door. Um, it'll be a metal door, it'll be a metal door jam, and then you're going to pay prevailing wage to have it installed. Um, and then we're going to buy the locking, the locking systems five hundred to eight hundred dollars per lock.
Yeah, yeah, because we had to buy replacement locks one time. They were, I want to say about seven, eight hundred dollars just for the lock.
You know what doors I'm talking about bubba? Why our doors are not applicable to that, why they don't.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, exactly. Nope.
Yeah, I've already done the research.
Gives me a ballpark figure to look at other funding sources then too, so.
Five grand is probably a, five grand for two bathroom doors is probably the right amount to look for.
All right. Gives me something to shoot for. Shooting for the moon right now, so.
Sorry, I got one more. Uh, because it just got on my mind. Labor Day Parade. Are we having the log show?
Uh, I, I gave the log team the okay to have, continue on, so I will allow permits. Um, they haven't decided if they're going to do it or not, but if, uh, our phase stays where it is right now or improves, then the answer is yes. Assuming that the log show, uh, committee or whatever they call them.
Yep.
Decides that they want to do it. Same with the Croatian picnic. Well, I will accept, uh, permit for events, for special events.
Okay, so.
Mayor? Mayor Halls, um, one of our representatives from the Croatian picnic has already attended the county reopening. Um, there's a, I want to say the chamber put up a class last week or the week before. It was a four to five hour course and they talked about how you reopen for events and um, our representative has been through that process and is working closely with, um, with them on the chamber of commerce, so we can open our event safely. Um, we are an outdoor event, so I'm glad to hear that news. I appreciate your support. And, uh, we will keep everybody safe and as long as we keep the same stature, um, July seventeenth, we'll have a Croatian picnic.
So to make that plug too, hopefully, uh, we'll have the crowning of the King Cole, usually at ten AM on, uh, on that Sunday, yeah, that Sunday of, uh, of Labor Day weekend and then to follow at one o'clock, we will have our parade. So I'll let everybody know.
All things being equal, yes.
Yeah, with everything and, yeah.
Just keep getting vaccinated.
Got mine.
Me too.
Um, I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting if there's nothing else.
If you're in favor, say aye.
Well, sorry Jeff.
Just all second that motion. If anybody wants a vaccination, give me a call.
All right, thanks you guys. Meeting adjourned and, uh, appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.